Madam City Clerk, confirmation posting and roll call.
Thank you. The agenda was posted in accordance with Nevada Open Meeting Law and all members are present.
Thank you. We will rise with the invocation offered by Reverend Carlton Fogg of the VFW for the Department of Nevada/Post Commander of Post 36. We'll offer the invocation and please stay standing for the pledge of allegiance thereafter. Thank you.
Please join me in prayer. Gracious Father, thank you for bringing us all here today. As we hear for the people of the city of Boulder City, may we make good decisions on their behalf, be there for them to give them support for this great city. Father, as you support our public safety, our law enforcement, firefighters, and everybody in this room, keep them safe. And I ask this in your gracious name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Thank you Reverend.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In the way of public announcements, September tomorrow, September 11th is the annual National Day of Service and remembrance to honor the memory of those lost in September 11th attacks. As we reflect with the spirit of unity and resilience and compassion that brought Americans together in the aftermath of this tragedy. Appropriate for us to appreciate all those who not only gave their lives but continue to give us protection and we appreciate those people who have been willing and still willing to help us and protect us. Thank you all. Because this particular meeting may not have as many controversial things, I thought it only appropriate to take this time and read what is always on the agenda. And I will read it. "The Chair," in this case, the Mayor, "reserves the right to curtail abusive, offensive, inflammatory, or repetitive comments that disrupt, disturb, or otherwise impede the orderly conduct of the meeting. In addition, any person willfully disrupting the meeting may be removed from the room by the presiding officer. Examples of disruptive conduct include without limitation yelling, stamping of feet, whistles, applause, heckling, name-calling, use of profanity, personal attacks, physical intimidation, threatening use of physical force, assault, battery, video recording, or other live streaming, or any other acts intended to impede the meeting or infringe on the rights of the Boulder City City Council, city staff, or meeting participants." And with that said, we will now open the meeting for public comment. During this portion, it will be for those things that are on the agenda. Those people who would like to come forward, write your name and identify who you are, and please come forward and share with us.
Hi. I don't do a lot of public speaking, so I'm just going to read it, okay? Hi, my name is Rebecca Wilkin and I have lived in Boulder City since 2014. In the last year, I've had to call the Boulder City Fire Department three times. And each time, the fire department has received another emergency call while they were assisting us. My husband ended up having to have heart surgery and both times, they had to transport him to Henderson. So while they were away, the other truck was answering a second call because they got that second call while they were still in our house assisting my husband. And I learned that if another call were to come in at that same time, they would have to come from Henderson and it would take at least 30 minutes to get there. And I have recently found that that is happening more often than we might think. And if I were that third person in that situation, I would hate to have to wait that long for someone to arrive to assist with that emergency. In researching this, I have discovered that the recommended amount of staff is 10 firefighters per shift for a suburban area. And we currently only have seven per shift with the additional, addition of more and more homes and people living in the area with the highway going through. And we have, we do not have adequate coverage for our town. As a resident who has experienced the emergency and heard the call for the second emergency both times that they were assisting us, I can assure you that we need that additional fire station along with additional equipment and staff. I have met the dedicated, caring individuals that are on the fire department and I shout out to them because they are awesome. And they have been asking for more personnel and equipment for quite some time. And although there has been talk of another fire station building, being built on the lakeside, which is where we live uptown, so far, it's just talk. I am here to voice the opinion that we need to stop talking and proceed with the building of the fire station and the addition of more staff before a tragedy occurs that we find ourselves unprepared to handle. I thank you for your time and your concern. Thank you.
If anyone needs to talk on the line, do we have anyone on the line? If they could call 702-589-9629. Anyone here in chambers like to come forward and give additional testimony in public comment? Seeing none, no one on the line, we will close the additional, or the public comment and move to approve for the regular agenda. Do you have a motion?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. And then we need a motion for, to approve the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
There is.
And thus, the consent agenda has been approved and we will move to the regular agenda. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda say aye.
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 And then for the regular agenda, the presentation by Deanna Kozlowski and whomever she brought with her.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, member of the council, Deanna Kozlowski. I am now the Chief of Teaching and Learning Initiatives for the Clark County School District. So I'd like to introduce Dr. Jesse Welsh, who's our new Deputy Superintendent in the school district, and our new Region 3 Superintendent, who's Theo Robison, who will be working with you on the quarterly updates. All right. So I'll do the, start with the celebrations and share our reports. So we'll start with Boulder City High School. They had an amazing start to the school year. They wanted to share that they hosted all the Boulder City Schools in professional development before the school started to celebrate their legacy of who they are and why they do what they do. Boulder City High School has added additional dual credit classes this year for Psychology 101 and Sociology 101 for a total of 14 college classes offered on campus, which is about 42 college credit hours. The climate and culture has been electric with students very excited to be back on campus with our Welcome Back Assembly, Positive Signs Thursday and High Five Fridays as we all see on their wonderful social media accounts as well. They're super excited for the homecoming festivities, the homecoming parade, of course, traditionally with all of our four Boulder City High Schools, the game and the dance. Garrett Junior High would like to share that they kicked off the school year with their new sixth grade boot camp to welcome the newest Bobcat families. They were able to come to meet the administration and counselors. They had their back-to-school business fair where families came to school all morning to get their schedules, athletics, and of course, most importantly, meet the team. They also wanted to share that they're so appreciative of their Boulder City School collaboration with the other schools and celebrating the legacy that this community has. Garrett is joining Mitchell Elementary School and becoming a leader in me school for this year. They joined together for a full day of staff trainings on the seven habits and they began the implementation for a three-year implementation plan. As well as we've talked about that they're a new governor's designated STEM school, they're focused on integrating engineering and design with their core classes. Their Hydroponics II class is focused on green architecture and designing systems and sustainability for the environment that we live in. They're going to partner with the community members to share their expertise in the work. They do want to share preliminary data that demonstrated that their Bobcats demonstrated over 5% growth in reading and about 9% growth in math and about an 11% gain in science. The credit goes to their fantastic teachers that provide high-quality instruction every single day. Their lady Bobcat football team has started their season with their cheer team and cross-country team. And they're going to take on some tough competition and represent the school with pride. Every Friday morning, for the culture of their school, they host yard games. You've probably seen that on social media as well, in their courtyard and music to celebrate the students in another great week. They ran their first spirit assembly and everyone wore Hawaiian shirts. And they wanted to share that their sixth grade design and modeling STEM course are designing a boot for children with spasticoblejia, a type of cerebral palsy that affects one side of the body. Their design will help the patient with tightened muscles and support in keeping their foot flat. This unit is introduction to learning about the design process. And they're looking forward to quarterly events to welcome families into their school. Mitchell Elementary School wanted to share that they also had a great start. They welcomed parents and guardians. They heard from the leader-in-me facilitator, Azor Faktu, and their child's teachers. They received positive feedback and their statement that everyone has genius. They continued the tradition of family meet and greet on Friday before school where they toured the classrooms and of course, met their teachers. And for the first day of school, as you may have seen, that they started a new transition, having all families gather on the front lawn of school. They created photo opportunities with back-to-school signs and then they all said the pledge together with a very positive start to the school year. They're grateful to the Rotary Club for their mini grants that they share. And the Sunset Rotary helped them window sparkly clean for the first day of school through moonwalking window cleaning. They're grateful to the Sunrise Rotary for their generous donations. And lastly, they want to share that they have their annual bubble run. They're looking for that success on September 19th. And in October, they look forward to inviting all of you and the community members to the school to share how they're going to become a leader-in-me lighthouse school. They also wanted to thank their 97 current volunteers that they have at the school. And lastly, from Martha P. King, they started their, their school year with a kickoff event at Boulder Creek Golf Course. They're very thankful for that sponsorship, that the teachers could enjoy team building, relay racing, dizzy golf, and laughing and connecting, most importantly. Again, all the five schools that came together to support and their continuing educational legacy in the community. They also held their meet and greet and for the third consecutive year, they'd like to thank the Boulder City Rotary Clubs for volunteering, handing out candy to students and strengthening connections with families. They also want to celebrate a major academic milestone. For the first time ever, all grade levels at Martha P. King scored above the 60th percentile on the MAP achievement, excuse me, the MAP assessment. This achievement reflects their hard, hard work and outstanding staff at Mitchell. They want to, they are looking ahead. They're preparing for the Week of Respect. The Week will feature presentations from the Boulder City Public Power, the Police Department, a group of therapy dogs who will play a special visit. They are very proud of the strong partnerships and dedication that makes Boulder City such a remarkable place for our schools. Now for the quarterly municipality report. I'm ensuring the student safety information and data from the district-wide survey from the end of last school year. As you saw for our students in grade four through five, about 88% of the students said that they felt safe. And we do know that is a small sample size for our fourth and fifth graders, so that's why we see some of the larger swings in there, but knowing that 88% of our students are feeling safe at school. And as you've seen for the middle school at Garrett Junior High, that there has been a decline over the last three years of our students reporting that they feel safe. And working with Principal Timont, what they had done when they received this data was actually administer another survey to their students because they really wanted to drill down more specifically to better understand what, what they didn't feel safe and what they could do. So they have focus groups of students. They're working very closely with their counselor. They've also identified a few students to provide wraparound services as well as working with the families for a plan. They started that at the end of last school year, once they received this data, and it started this school year as well to be able to address and ensure that our students feel safe. They do plan on following up with a subsequent administration of the survey again to ensure that our students are feeling safe at our school. And that you see at our high school, you know, approximately 89% of our students in the last three years, very positive results that they feel safe at school. Working with chronic absenteeism, again, this report shows from the third quarter at the end of last school year for chronic absenteeism. So again, we appreciate the partnership that the city has provided with our families and our schools, reaching out directly to the families and ensuring that we all understand the importance of attending school every single day. And then lastly, wanting to show in terms, in regards to student behavior, that we saw a decline in the number of out-of-school suspensions last year and a decline of approximately 43 out-of-school suspensions for last school year. So when we take a look at the data that our students are feeling safe and connected, that we did see that decline as well in student behavior. So that's our report and then I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Councilwoman Jorgensen, I'm sure you've got something.
Hi, thank you. A couple of questions for you. One is if we don't see a line under a certain demographic of, of individuals, does that mean that we aren't, we don't have a representation from that group of individuals at our school now?
It's either that or the N-count was below 10 and so it's not reported on this data.
Okay, below 10, okay. Because I was kind of like, well, some have two, some have three lines.
Yeah.
Secondly, I'm so glad that you addressed the safety and I was thinking, was there one question that was more concerning for the kids than others? And, you know, we've, we've seen a lot, you can see a lot if parents watch TV too, that can make you concerned and then that can affect your feeling of safety too. So I'm really glad to hear they're going to do a deeper dive and then administer it a couple of times. Plus, they're, you know, they're sixth through eighth graders, so I didn't feel safe in junior high either. I'm sure my parents didn't. So also, I love that you come and do celebrations, no pressure. But I do love that because there is a lot to celebrate in school and sometimes we get so hyper-focused on data-driven that comes. And I know, that we forget that there's a community that comes around and, and celebrates with them. And I loved what you talked about, the Boulder City High School legacy. They, they did a time capsule, right? And they had, they lined the teachers up. They said from the one that had been there the longest to the one that just got on. And I can't remember, I could be wrong and it will be in the newspaper if I am. I thought it was 40 years possibly that there was someone, you know, one of the teachers. And I thought that was pretty remarkable. And quite a celebration to be in one place like that and, and committing to teaching children for that long or young adults, if they want to call them that. Just a shout out from up here, it takes many hands to make a community school great. And to the Rotary that I know have helped fund and the teachers a little bit. And disclosure, I'm a member of one, but it's not just ours. It's others too. And, and I love that. So, and we will miss you.
Thank you.
You have big shoes to fill. You'll come in pink next time? Just with celebrations. I'll, I will, I will take that. So thank you for all that you've done. My last question, and I think I've talked to you about that last time that you came, I asked the question about maintenance on our schools. We kind of do have an aging infrastructure here and we recognize that you did want to provide a K-8 and that didn't seem to work for our community. But we also have to, to address and look at the aging infrastructure that we have to make sure that we maintain it. So graciously, you had someone reach out to me at the end of last year and tell me that they were meeting in the fall to be able to go over the timeline for what it looked like and where we fit into that timeline. I don't know if that meeting's occurred, but if it has, I would love to know when that timeline is.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Jorgensen, if I could, again, Dr. Jesse Welsh for the record, Deputy Superintendent with the CCSD. So we are working through those steps in terms of our facilities master plan. And one of the pieces that I know is coming up very shortly, I mean, literally, I can tell you, we've had conversations as recently as this morning talking about some of that, is making sure that we are connecting with all of our community in terms of what that looks like. Because it's not just something top-down that's coming from the district. We really want to hear truly from our municipalities, from all of our families, from our parents, from our constituents. And so definitely keep your ears open, I'm sure, working with our Community and Government Relations Department. We're going to be reaching out to make sure that we have, we have a variety of meetings that are going to be coming up as well as opportunities for input on that as we look at what some of those options may look like and recognizing that. I mean, I can tell you that they've got it split up into different geographic areas. I've seen some of the stuff in terms of here in Boulder. And so I know that will be something coming, so definitely keep your ears open. There hasn't been any determinations in terms of exactly what that may look like because we want to hear from, from the community.
Do you know if our area will, the meetings will be in Boulder City or will we be put together with some of Henderson that's, you know, close to us? How, how does that look? Do you know?
I don't know specifically, but we can certainly check with Community and Government Relations and find out. I know we are trying to make sure we have meetings as widely as we can all across the county to make sure that we're getting the widest net. And I believe there will also be some opportunities potentially for people to submit feedback, obviously, if they can't make one of the meetings.
Okay. And so if I, I have any input that even matters, I would state for the record, we are kind of a rural school, even though we're in a populated area within 15, 20 minutes. And you would And you would have better results from here if the meeting was held here. Yeah, and more people would be able to attend, so that's just my two cents.
Of course, thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions? Councilman Walton?
Thank you. Thank you for those questions. Dr. Jaskowski, I don't know how many times you hear it pronounced correctly. I hope that was at least one time here in Boulder.
No, it was, thank you.
Okay. Congratulations on your promotion, and thank you for the years that you've been coming to Boulder City and engaged with our community. So best to you in your future endeavors there. As far as the dual-credit classes, as far as I had understood in the past, somebody had been required to be enrolled in CSN High School or something of that nature to get dual-credit classes. Is this new-ish to Boulder City High School, and which institution is it connected with for those dual credits?
So thank you for the question. The two courses, the psychology and the sociology, are brand-new. They've had a number of other classes, and I can get back to you with a specific partnership, so I don't misspeak.
Okay, thank you. And similar thought, as Councilmember Jorgensen, if anybody watches the news or is aware of, you know, the happenings nationally, I could see how both parents and children could feel a certain degree of lack of safety, and certainly appreciate the fact that there'll be some more specific data driven to what can be done to intervene if necessary, or to provide some perspective. I will say, as I've gone to the various schools for different reasons with my grandchildren, I appreciate what we have in place. You know, the engineering, safety, as far as access, getting in, you're directed right to the office, you can't get out and about in the schools, and that's really important, as well as the way that staff interacts with those of us that are coming to visit or pick up a child or whatever. And so both at the district level and at our different schools, you know, thank you for the efforts that are being done there, and we recognize that and appreciate, we're doing all, you know, reasonably can be done, right? And finding out more is, I think, important, so. Anyway, that's all I had. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
On the 60% of the kids that were, was that above grade level? You talked about 60% of the kids.
Oh, yes.
Is that above grade level?
Yes, they're projected to be proficient on the state assessment.
Okay, that's great, that's good news. And congratulations on your promotion. I'm not going to pronounce your name. I'm not going to try to beat Steve out there on that one.
Thank you.
You did a great job. But for the predecessor, what I'd like to see a little bit more, I love, I think we have the most amazing teachers and students in Boulder City, and I love that they're so active and they do all these wonderful things and actually support a lot of the things that they do. I enjoy doing that. I really would like to know more and hear more each time that you come here of what we're doing to improve the students that are struggling, because it's not just about the good kids or the kids that are proficient at grade level, but what are we doing for those kids that need a little extra help? I really think that would really help the whole community to know what's being done there and what it is and how it's going.
I'll make sure he does that.
Okay. Thank you. You're great.
You're welcome.
But anyways, welcome to Boulder City. I think you're going to love us here, because we are a wonderful rural community, and I think Sherry's saying that we don't fit in with, we are considered rural, and so I think everybody knows where everybody lives and what everybody's doing, and you don't know that in Henderson and Las Vegas. So we all know how to find Mayor's house, so. Not in Henderson or Las Vegas. So anyway, so I think having a meeting out here where we can be ourselves and work the way we're used to working. So, and congratulations, and I look forward to seeing you in the next quarter.
Thank you very much.
That's all I have.
Thank you, thank you.
So the benefit of being almost last than the mayor is that all the good questions were already asked, so if you're off the, you're good with me. One thing that I really, really liked, that the absentee numbers have really changed over the time, because I'm always asking the questions about the struggling kids and those that may be left behind, so I was glad to see that that improved. Safety, obviously, is a national priority. One of the things I'd like to ask is not on your PowerPoint, but, you know, e-bikes is like the new thing. I know it's not on the agenda or anything, but is there a program that maybe the schools are looking at, training the children on road safety? I remember the DARE program, so it's not like it's outside and not in the school. They are in the school, and that's their first learning, you know, a place where they learn, obviously, home. But is there any talk about maybe training the kids on bike safety?
No, I appreciate that. I can work with our, actually, Mr. Robison can work with our four leaders and partner with the Boulder City Police in working with that. I know in some of our schools in Las Vegas and in Henderson, we've worked with our CCSD Police as well in regards to the enforcement of the safety of, very concerning, to your point.
Thank you. I'm glad to hear about the STEM program. I mean, Boulder City is probably the jewel of Nevada when it comes to school. I'm not just saying that because I live here, but it's a fact. So, but it takes administration, it takes, what, 197 volunteers? That says a lot for the community. Thank you for what you do. I know we kind of grill you when you come here, but this is a thank you for what you do, and we look forward to grilling you, as Sherry said earlier. So any way that we could help as well, please let us know. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you all. So the key question is, is your replacement able to talk as fast as you do?
Yes. I will train him, Mayor.
If next quarter comes, I'll be prepared.
We're going to give him a moment in the sunlight here, if he wants to say something about where you've been, where you, and why you are so thrilled and blessed to be here in Boulder City.
So Theodore Robeson III, and I'm actually coming from Denver, Colorado area. I worked the last seven years of my career in Thompson School District, which is in Loveland, Colorado, which is a very similar, small, semi-rural community such as Boulder City. And so one of the things that I really appreciate is having this opportunity, being mentored by Dr. Jay. I won't try to pronounce her name wrong myself, but, so I'm calling her Dr. Jay. But she's done a phenomenal job, kind of helping me understand the lay of the land, learning a lot of the system structures and routine, and then also with Dr. Welsh here is, too, I feel like I have two very strong mentors that's going to help support me in my transition here. So I'm just very thankful to have this opportunity and get to learn, and also get to provide some feedback in areas where we can focus on continuous improvement across the system. So very thankful to be here tonight, and I will tell you, I actually had dinner up here at your Big T Cantina, which is actually pretty darn good ceviche for such a rural community, so I will give you that celebration. So looking forward to spending some time here, spending some time in the schools in the near future, and again, thank you very much for having me here tonight.
Thank you, and yes, he can talk fast.
Yeah, he can. This is good.
Good job. We appreciate all of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Don't forget, go Raiders, no longer Broncos.
I'm an Eagles fan.
That's even better.
Now, it used to be that the mayor made you stay for the whole meeting, but that you don't actually have to. Thank you. Appreciate you coming. We will now move to our presentation by Warren Hardy and Suzy's staff regarding the November 2000, or the Nevada 2025 Legislative Session.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll start by turning it over to Warren to give you our lobbyists with Hardy Strategies, and then we will move to staff to give you an update on some of the bills that pass and how they're going to impact the city.
Thank you, Brittany. Your Honor, Members of the Council, Warren Hardy with Warren Hardy Strategies. Thank you for the opportunity and honor of representing Boulder City again this session. In terms of a general overview, I thought, I don't know if you saw Senator, former Senator Dallas Harris was here tonight and with a client, and she asked me about the session. She said, "I heard it was really rough on it." I would put it in my, I don't know, 25 sessions or something, 20 sessions, as one of the easiest. It was fairly mild, generally. There was a good spirit of bipartisanship. It was a little bit of a rough ending, if any of you followed the news, but that's to be expected when emotions are high at the end of a session. I told you I would watch out for certain things this session, including mission creep. If you remember my report prior to the session, I was very concerned about the attitude of the legislature relative to stepping in and doing things that are traditionally local government responsibilities. I'll report on that at the end. I do want to mention our bill, AB 27, which did not succeed. We did have a lot of conversations about it. I felt like we had a lot of support for it. I will tell you that at the end of the day, I think the Purrs Board got cold feet a little bit and didn't quite grasp what we were trying to do, and we're concerned about precedent. Certainly an issue we can look at going forward, but we were not successful, unfortunately. We did continue to build strong relationships, working with the other local governments, which is a real key to success, is to be unified with local governments. Brittany came up a couple of times and participated in that, and really, really placed Boulder City in a very strong position, in my opinion. So I'm going to turn it over to Brittany to talk about the bills that passed that are going to have an impact on the city, and when I say an impact on the city, require the city staff to do something different than they did before the legislature started. And then I'll come back and touch on some of the bills that we were successful in defeating that were problematic for all cities, including Boulder City. So with that, if it pleases the Chair, I'll turn it over to, turn it back to Brittany for a moment.
Thank you.
We've, excuse me, we've put together a little PowerPoint for you, and this is segmented by department that the bills will impact. So the first bills we would like to highlight impact the city clerk's office and most relate to elections and public records. The first was Assembly Bill 92. Previously, in 2021, the legislator had repealed a mandate that public spaces within public buildings be allowed for party caucuses. This mandate was reinstated, so now public buildings, we do have to make those available to the political parties for party caucuses. It was something we previously did, so it's not that big of a change, but that was reinstated. Assembly Bill 28 creates a 10-member Public Records Task Force. Appointments are made by members of Nevada Legislature and must be made by the end of October. We'll keep a close eye on who gets appointed to this task force and their work over the interim, and be sure that Boulder City has a voice in any recommendations they make for revisions to the public records law, to ensure that the law continues to promote transparency in a way that is balanced, protecting the privacy interests of our residents. AB 197 requires, with certain exceptions, a government entity to keep confidential personal information in the records that identifies a person as a donor, member, or volunteer of a nonprofit organization. This bill is quite complicated, it's something all the local governments are trying to interpret and find ways to administer. It exempts grants and agreements we have with nonprofits, so for example, Emergency Aid or Lend a Hand, we provide them with grants every year. We have documentation with regard to their business and their formation documents, et cetera. That would not be included in this scope. This is other records that we could have that show that a person is a donor of a nonprofit. We're not aware of any that we have, but we are looking at our records and making sure that we don't have any information. If we do, we find a way to protect that information, because there are penalties if we accidentally disclose that information in a public records request. We could be sued, and the person can receive attorney fees for having to sue us. So we do have some concerns about that, as do the other local governments, but we're working through that one. And then finally, in the city clerk's department, we have Assembly Bill 499. This established voter ID, and we were supportive of this bill, but it was vetoed by the governor. It was because there were, it was a comprehensive bill that didn't just address voter ID, there were other election provisions, and the governor was uncomfortable with the looser guidelines for the mail-in ballots, so it was vetoed. And then for the courts, SB 17, we wanted to highlight, this expands persons eligible for court diversion programs, like our Boulder City Recovery Court Program. So previously, someone had to have a squeaky-clean record, meaning no prior convictions for anything other than a minor traffic offense, before they could be eligible to be in a diversionary program. Now, certain offenses, they can have a prior conviction, say for like a DUI or possession of a narcotic paraphernalia or something like that, and they could still be eligible for a diversionary program, which they could still benefit from. And it still gives us the discretion to choose really who we believe will be successful in such a program. It doesn't take that away, but it just expands who can be eligible for our diversionary Then the Police Department, Assembly Bill 381, this increases penalties for animal cruelty, expands the definition of torture or cruelty to include acts, omissions, or neglect. And so we were supportive of this, and that's one we wanted to highlight. Then there's more procedural changes with regard to police personnel. SB 279, it just requires additional notices for investigations of police officers. We now have to notify witnesses within 48 hours if a police officer could be subject to punitive action if we're doing an investigation. Witnesses just have to receive the same notice, and then the notice has to detail the allegations against the officer. This is known as the Peace Officer Bill of Rights. And then SB 298 also dealt with the Peace Officer Bill of Rights and includes denials of compensation increases as a potential punitive action that would trigger NRS 289 requirements. So if an officer was going to be, say, denied their pay increase due to some allegation against them, then we would have to notice them and let them know, you know, you could be subject to this disciplinary action, we're going to do an investigation, you have a right to representative, things like that, just additional due process for peace officers. And then with business licensing, Assembly Bill 418, this requires the city to adopt an ordinance requiring any establishment that handles pets to complete a training course with biennial renewals. So this bill, we are still working with the other cities to determine what that training course would be. It wouldn't apply to most businesses within our city, it would really only apply to if, once the breeding ordinance is brought back, if that were to pass and allow breeding, and then groomers. Groomers, it would apply to veterinarians are exempt, and we're working with the other jurisdictions to see if they're going to offer a government course, that maybe we can have an inter-local agreement. Perhaps the City of Las Vegas or City of Henderson will offer a course that we can recommend, or there might be private courses available to meet this requirement. So we're still just doing some research into that, or we could develop our own course as well, but that may have a fiscal impact. So we are researching that, and we'll bring that ordinance back. That's not effective till October, so the requirement to adopt the ordinance isn't triggered until October, and there's not a timeline, per se, for when the ordinance has to be finalized. And then Senate Bill 373, this mandates a regional business license for Southern Nevada, which really could be beneficial to a lot of businesses within Southern Nevada. A lot of small businesses especially don't realize they need a business license for each jurisdiction, and this would enable a business to receive a business license in all the jurisdictions at once, and then the relative jurisdiction would remit the applicable fee to the appropriate jurisdiction. So I'm having a local government attorneys meeting on Thursday. We're going to discuss this bill and see what, how this is going to look as well. We're not sure what the fiscal impact would be, if we have to purchase new software to implement it, how we're going, if we are able to issue the regional business license, we would then have to make sure that we remit any fees that are due to the other jurisdictions. So it's just a bit of a logistical thing that we're needing to evaluate still, and we are working with the other jurisdictions to find the best way to implement that. I think it really will be beneficial to businesses in our city. And then for public works, Assembly Bill 502, so this made several changes to public works compliance. So within 30 days after substantial completion of a contract for public work, we now have to conduct an investigation for any possible violations of public works laws or, and refer the matter to the Public Works Compliance Division. So in reality, what this is going to translate to is we already contract a lot of times with construction managers for our projects, so we have a consultant that will manage the project for us. So we have a consultant that will manage the project for us and ensure that it's completed properly. We'd probably add this to their scope to have that investigation done at the end. So it just could cost us a little bit of money in consultant's fees to comply. And then AB 530, we were excited about. This allows the county commission to extend fuel revenue indexing. And if FRI, which that's the abbreviation for fuel revenue indexing, if it wasn't extended, then we will receive less funding for our roads and the costs of maintenance and construction is only going up. So we are hopeful that the county does make the decision to extend FRI because that will continue the revenue that we receive in order to keep our roadways in a good state of repair. And then for community development, we wanted to highlight Assembly Bill 241. So this now mandates that cities allow multifamily housing and commercially zoned property. We already do allow multifamily and commercially zoned property with a conditional use permit. I'm happy to tout, our lobbyist Warren Hardy was able to secure an amendment that allows local jurisdictions to impose standards and requirements in order to qualify for building multifamily in a commercial zone. So we're evaluating our code to see if we need to change it. Right now, again, we require a conditional use permit, so that could meet the standards and requirements definition of the law. It just requires a little bit more legal research to see if we need to update our code. But that is the change I wanted to highlight there. And that concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Questions?
Sorry, when you say mandate multifamily housing in commercial zones, so like right down on, in the middle of our business district or in the middle?
I believe so, yeah.
Thank you, Councilwoman George. And that's a great question. That was the reason for our concern. And that was the first one on my list to talk about in terms of the, you know, state government infringing on local government. So the bill initially was very prescriptive in what, where we had to have them, where we had to allow them, where we didn't have a choice. It was a complete mandate. We were able to go in and get an amendment that just said, you have to allow them. How you allow them is up to you as a local government. And the conversation that I personally had with a lot of legislators this session was, look, you're state legislators. We are not a home rule state. You have the right authority, and it's appropriate for you to weigh in on policy issues. But give us the 30,000-foot view of what you want. And so that's what we ended up agreeing to on this bill. We went from being very prescriptive, where it literally would have required if somebody, we didn't have a choice, by right, somebody could go in and say, I want to put a house in this Chevron gas station. We were able to get an amendment that says you have to allow multifamily housing in your code. You have to permit it, but how we permit it, where we permit it, is up to us. So it was a good and important amendment, really the best we could do under the circumstances. It happened to be this Assembly Majority Leader's bill, and she was just not walking away from it. But we did get her to agree to give us all the authority in terms of developing it. So it is a right now for an individual to build multifamily housing in a commercial area, but we get to set up the standards that are associated with it. So we still have a great deal of control over the issue.
So while you're still up there, do we have to do that proactively, set up the standard? Or can we wait?
Great question, Mayor. I would argue that since you already allow multifamily housing in commercial areas, you already comply with the statute. I think Brittany's smart and wise, as she always is, and doing an abundance of caution. But my guess is that you're already, you're fine. It's any city that doesn't allow it. And the change is, and we were very uncomfortable, I was uncomfortable because Brittany was uncomfortable with the use of the word "by right" because we don't know what that means, but they put it in the law. We're going to have to deal with it. But it simply says, yes, you have a right to do it, but you got to do it the way the city tells you you got to do it. So we're closer to the beginning of this story than we are to the end. But we took a big old lemon and made a bunch of lemonade out of it to the extent we could.
Other comments?
Thank you, sir, for coming and giving us an update. AB 92, what does that look like? Is it political parties asking to use a conference room? What does that actually look like?
Yeah, I mean, the conference room, council chambers. I mean, for a caucus, you probably want something bigger like the Smith Building. But yeah, it just requires us to make public space available if it's requested.
The other question I had was on SB 17, the break in the cycle. It talked about the recovery program. Does that come with more grants for that program? Does that open it up? Or is it just solidifying what it is?
No, this just expands who's eligible to participate in the Recovery Court program. So previously, if you had a prior conviction for drugs or like a DUI, you wouldn't be eligible. Now, it excludes gross misdemeanors and felonies. So if you have a gross misdemeanor felony, you're not eligible. But if you say had a misdemeanor DUI or a misdemeanor narcotics paraphernalia possession or something like that, then we could, and we felt you were a good candidate for the diversionary program. We felt you, you know, we thought you could succeed. Then that doesn't preclude you from being included in the program. So that's all it does. It doesn't provide any additional resources for our program.
Okay, and like last time, I'll give you some homework. It's not on here, but SB or AB 220 on water reduction for residential. And obviously, it says for sewage. Could you, maybe next time, come in or send me something via email? A little bit on that, if that's going to impact us, how soon, when, those type things?
Are you referring to the AB 220? I think that was actually last session that had the Colorado River water can't be used for...
That's correct, yes.
Yes, we can definitely provide you a summary of that bill and how it's going to impact us.
That obviously would go to all of us.
Of course, yes.
I have a little bit of clarification, if you don't mind. So as far as breaking the cycle, as we talked about it, it opens the pool larger, but does it have any ramification for who we choose? Or Phil is eligible and do they say we could still have a cap? I mean, we only have so many resources, right, available too. So let's say that increases the pool of individuals that could participate in it. And I know that the discretion is wonderful over there at the Recovery Court program. I just wondered what happens within the resources that we currently have?
It does not take away any control over the jurisdiction to choose who goes in the program. It just simply expands the eligibility of who can be in the program.
Mayor, just to thank you, Warren, appreciate your efforts, your diligent efforts up at the legislature. And as we did what we could to navigate the landscape for the bill that our council put forward, it was a good attempt with potentially positive outcomes. But, you know, the legislature is a living, breathing body, and sometimes you deal with what you get. And on all these others, very comprehensive report, both what we've received from you and our city attorney. Thank you both. And I had the chance to, you know, deep dive into some of these. And I'm really grateful for the efforts and for the watchful eye for our community that has occurred on both accounts here. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
So with that, Mayor, if I could just take a few more minutes of your time to talk about the watchful eye stuff and what we were able to do. As I said in my report before session, one of the trends that I've been concerned about, and it has a lot to do with term limits and the lack of mentoring that happens at the legislature, that legislators get in and they don't really understand that they're, or maybe they do, but there's federal issues, there's local issues, there's state issues, and how to distinguish between those two. And I felt really good about our efforts this time generally in educating legislators that, no, that, we want your input, but that's a local government issue. And you need to let the people, the body of government closest to the people, deal with the issue. And I feel like we made really a lot of progress. And I want to give a lot of credit to Assemblywoman Haigey on 241 that we just talked about. There was another bill, Assemblywoman, never forget all what's her name. I'll think of it in a minute, who was also very, very prescriptive in what we could do with regard to accessory dwelling units and how we had to structure them and how we had to... There again, we were really successful in getting her to just give high-level stuff and leave the rest to the local governments. With regard to multi-jurisdictional business licensing that Brittany brought up, we were very concerned about potential fiscal impact and whether, we knew it was a good idea to have a county-wide jurisdictional business license, but what's it going to cost us? And so we were really able to clarify that for now, the only thing that we're obligated to do is adopt an ordinance. And the ordinance can say Boulder City will participate in the multi-jurisdictional ordinance when it's economically feasible to do so. And Brittany really pounded this home, you know, it's a great idea, but what's it going to cost? We just don't know. And she's in the process of figuring it out now. So really appreciate her guidance on that. There was another bill on sidewalk vendors that was vetoed. That really came out. That was the one bill that came out, in my opinion, being far too prescriptive on local governments. And we were able to convince the governor of that, so he vetoed it. A couple of other bills that were problematic in the construction and public works. There's a bill that now has come before the legislature 15 years in a row? 15, yeah, seven sessions in a row regarding off-site fabrication, paying prevailing wage on off-site fabrication, which would have broadly increased the application of prevailing wage. Mayor, you helped me deal with this numerous times while you were in the legislature. That bill gratefully failed. It would have been completely unmanageable for your public works department. There's just no way to enforce it. There were multiple bills that allowed what we thought was inappropriate access to public works job sites for folks affiliated with labor unions beyond the labor unions. Labor unions already have access to them, unfettered access to them. They wanted to extend it into other areas. There was a bill that was very problematic, AB 222, that would have required our public works department to prioritize hiring on public works jobs in terms of veterans, women, minority, they would have had to actually prioritize the hiring. And one of the challenges we already have, I think your public works department will tell you this, is to get people interested in bidding public works projects because the regulatory burden is so significant. In that case, we were actually able to get to the sponsor of the bill, who was trying to do a good thing, and say, this is just not workable. And he agreed and backed off. There was a bill regarding air quality that was fairly comprehensive and would have been expensive for the city. We were able to get it amended to where it simply deals with days that have bad, are bad health quality because of wildfires, which we have a few of here. But before, it was very, very broad. Last session, we talked a lot about language access. You might recall, we were able to get the city, Boulder City, exempted from the requirements to have the language access, which means all city documents in the five languages that are most common, spoken. Commonly spoken, it would have been a big fiscal note. There was actually a good bill on that this session that failed, and it would have provided funding for that. Again, we were able, last session, to get Boulder City exempted from that. There was a couple of bills that I just think would have been a fiscal nightmare. AB 388 required 15 weeks of paid family leave mandated, which just would have been a catastrophic fiscal number for that. It did make it through the legislature, and the governor thankfully vetoed it. There was, speaking of employee meetings, there was also a bill that was well-intentioned that would have held the city liable, or any employer liable, for that matter, if somebody felt uncomfortable in a meeting where they felt there was political propaganda. So it was kind of at cross purposes with the other bill, or the religious, or those sorts of things. Again, well-intentioned. I couldn't figure out how we would enforce it or how we would manage it. That bill did pass and was vetoed by the governor. There's a bill, SB 173, that was problematic, would have redirected redevelopment funds to heat mitigation, which we just, is not something, I mean, I think most redevelopment plans in most cities are very responsible in dealing with their heat mitigation and requiring plans and that kind of thing. And that would have been just a precedent-setting thing that would have been problematic to say, we're going to require you to take funds from your redevelopment area and put it towards heat mitigation. We were able to defeat that. Maybe the most problematic bill in my mind was SB 303, which would have dramatically changed the issue of civil liability on recreational property. It would have significantly broadened the liability of the city on any recreational property the city currently has. Again, bill passed, governor vetoed it. We're working now, there's been a task force put together. The governor's veto message, he said, there are some legitimate things here he wants addressed. So we're working on that. I just quickly want to mention AI. I think I told you at the last briefing that I expected a lot to happen on AI, and I could not have been more wrong. There was literally nothing that happened on, no, that's not true. I hate it when people say literally when it's not literally. There was almost nothing that was done. Senator Dean Anil had a fairly comprehensive bill that did not pass. I think the legislature is sort of feeling their way around on this right now. They recognize that it's an issue that has to be addressed. In my opinion, they did a first positive step in AB 325 that mandates that with regard to the 911 emergency system, that the final decision has to be made by a live person, not by AI. So it allows them to utilize AI up to the point of the final decision. We did, this doesn't impact Boulder City, I don't think, maybe it does, but the significant copper wire theft that's been occurring in Clark County. I don't think it's found its way to Boulder City, but it eventually would have. We were able to get fairly strong legislation through dealing with, it makes it a felony to possess a certain amount of utility wire. On the catalytic converter theft that we dealt with a couple of years ago, making the possession of a catalytic converter, literally, I can say it now, stopped catalytic converter theft. You talk to Metro now, it went from just one of the worst problems they have to almost just nonexistent. And so we're hoping the same thing will happen there. I quickly want to touch on the rumors about a special session. I don't think those are rumors. I think it's likely. I have been in contact with folks in the governor's staff as well as legislators. I think we can probably expect a special session in early November. There are at least two budgetary items that need to be addressed. The state's still analyzing the cuts from the big beautiful bill to figure out what else we might need to adjust in Nevada. So there certainly will be budgetary items. I was a little bit surprised to learn that I think the governor and legislators are considering addressing some of the policy issues. I know the governor would really like to get his crime bill considered in special session. But part of the challenge we're having right now is agreeing on what to deal with in special session. Film tax credit, there's conversations, an article in the paper today, the film tax credit might find its way onto the special session agenda. I will tell you, they didn't run out of time on that. They just didn't have the votes. So I don't know what the utility of putting it in a special session is. But those are the conversations. I do think there will be a special session. And the last thing I want to say before I answer questions is, thank you for Brittany. I don't think I've ever worked with anybody who more concisely cuts to the chase and understands how this stuff impacts the city and is able to give me invaluable direction in terms of what we should ask for and how we should ask for it. So her experience in the legislature, given to the fact that she's just really smart. So her experience in the legislature, given to the fact that she's just really smart, is just a great team. I really appreciate the work she does, it makes my job so much easier. And with that, I'll be happy to stand for questions, if there are any.
I just have one on the catalytic converter. Was that because of enforcement that it came to a halt?
Yeah, so the catalytic, thank you, council member. So the catalytic converter was two, twenty-three session, and the challenge that we were having was that a law enforcement officer would pull somebody over. In fact, Metro told me they had six police cruisers that had catalytic converters stolen off of them. And they would pull somebody over and they'd have ten of these things in the back of a truck. And the law enforcement would say, "Where did you get those?" And "I'm a hobbyist," or, you know, blah, blah. The problem is, no matter what they said, there was nothing law enforcement could do about it. Because in order to enforce it, you had to actually catch them under the car sawing off the catalytic converter. So what the catalytic converter law did in 2023, if you have more than, if you're in possession of more than two catalytic converters, you're subject to a felony. Just the possession, making the possession the crime. So now, when an officer pulls somebody over and they've got catalytic converters, they can arrest them, they can slap the cuffs on them and charge them with a felony. We used that model for the copper wire, and I was with, I meet monthly with Metro on this and other things, but they reported to me that the copper wire theft has gone off the table. Built, you know, off the edge, it's just, they're not stealing it anymore. And the bill doesn't even take effect until October. So the fact that people are realizing there's going to be an increased penalty for that. So it's a case study in the fact that, you know, crime, drop in crime is directly related to the severity of the penalty.
I also heard or seen that they were putting numbers on the catalytic converter. So if he has four or five and those numbers don't check out, then that's an arrest too. So enforcement is important, obviously.
That's an excellent observation. That was what a lot of other states have done, which is just so complicated, because now you have to, the problem is, you have certain legislators that just don't want to see increased penalties. And we struggled with that in Nevada, particularly on the copper wire, not so much on catalytic converter, because everybody was really mad, right? And I remember in the hearing, one of the legislators said to me, "Are you concerned about people getting profiled?" And I said, "You know who I'm concerned about? I'm concerned about the single mom of three kids that gets up at four in the morning to go to her job as a server at Caesar Palace, and she's got a catalytic converter stolen. That's who I'm concerned about." And so, it's never easy to increase penalties, so most states have gone to something like that. I will tell you that what we did in Nevada on both of these is a case study nationally for the way to handle it. So I think the legislature should be very proud of the steps that they've made in this. It's leading the nation.
Was there any talk on school choice or school funding for children in preschool?
Yes. Always talk about school choice. That's always an issue with the legislature. The governor had a few things that didn't really rise to the, as it did the prior session, it didn't really rise to the level. I think there was an interesting dynamic in, A, that people were trying to get along, which was a good sign, and B, there was a recognition based on the last session that the political environment in America and in Nevada is very unstable, and legislators don't want to do anything super aggressive. So not as much conversation about school choice as there traditionally is, and that's gone, you know, that's, just goes back and forth every session, from one session actually approving it to the next session repealing it. Not as active as it's been in the past.
Thank you. Thank you for all your hard work, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you again for the honor of representing this great city. I loved it when I represented it in the Senate, and I love it today. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Mr. Harty. That brings us to number seven, our deputy fire chief, and probably has somebody to introduce as well.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Greg Schesser, you are deputy fire chief. It is with, whoever? So it is with great pride that I present to you our annual report for fiscal year 2025 on behalf of the dedicated professionals of the Boulder City Fire Department. We remain committed to our core values of respect, accountability, professionalism, integrity, diversity, and compassion. On a side note, I want to thank all of our firefighters personally for what I consider to be an outstanding year. We had a lot of successes and progressed well, so I want to personally thank them for that. Hello?
He's back.
Yeah. Big thumb. So our mission, this is a mission of Boulder City Fire Department, provide the highest level of public safety services for our community. This is consistent with our vision to continuously strive to meet the changing needs of our community and to maintain a high level of readiness and provide the highest level of customer service satisfaction through innovation. Here's our organization. Just to kind of brief on this, you know, administratively, we have six assigned to include our contract fire inspector, twenty-four assigned to operations with our daily staffing of eight. And then we currently have two reserve battalion chiefs and one reserve firefighter. And right now, we have two reserve cadet firefighters who just completed their nineteen weeks, and will be starting here in the coming weeks. A little different from last year's annual brief, what I wanted to kind of show here is our plate, and our plate is full, and our cup is full, and our side dish and everything else. As you can see, within the fire department and the organization, we have a lot that goes on 24/7. Fire suppression, incident management on your EMS side, obviously ALS, medical pushing drugs, not medications, not drugs. On the fire prevention code enforcement side, probably the most, on the forefront, the most important piece of our job is right there in code enforcement, because that's the way we prevent things from happening, when we do public education, fire inspections, plans reviews, all the things that Brad Stasic does for us as well. And then, again, like I said, our community risk reduction specific to public safety education, as you see, you know, we added a few this year, improved a few this year. We added the bike, the helmet safety program, and then we kind of reinvigorated our free smoke and carbon dioxide detector program, which, in that first two months that we did that, we gave out 172 detectors in two months. So we're up to 227 now. For 2025, Boulder City Fire had 2,755 calls for service and continues upward in that trend, if you look over the last couple of years. Most of these calls, seventy-four percent are classified as emergency medical services incidents, and this is a slight decrease, seven percent decrease from last year. And then a majority of our calls, ninety-one percent, occurred within the populated area of the city. During the last year, we also recorded 415,000 loss of property valued at 1.8 million. EMS transports, again, BCFD responded to 2,039 EMS calls in 2025 compared to twenty-one, yeah, 2,132 EMS calls in '24 and 1,904 in '23. So sixty-six percent of those calls resulted in transports to hospitals as compared to eighty-two percent the year prior. In 2025, forty-five percent were transported to Boulder City, twenty-nine percent was transported to Sienna, third, twenty-three percent to Henderson, and three percent to others. And those are either a three to two percent decrease or increase on those others. And you can, four percent was actually an increase to Boulder City Hospital. Another service, and I indicated on here, was a non-emergent, which we consider non-emergent or simply lip assist. They're not injured, they just need to be picked up off the floor or wherever they're at. We are seeing a slightly higher trend. We really jumped from last year to this year, from 294 to 327. And I can tell you right now, we are looking at almost 500 if we continue the trend we are in the last two and a half months. This is not something new, this is not something specific to Boulder City. This is just, this is a systemic problem across the country that for these type of services, it's generally the fire department or the EMS that are called to do this. And the biggest problem there is, is these are non-emergent, they take thirty to forty-five minutes to take care of, and then that time, you're looking at emergent calls that are kind of in the middle of those, or vice versa. We're on an emergent call, they need a lip assist, and that may take thirty to forty-five minutes to get there, because we just don't have the availability. On here, again, what I wanted to highlight, and I've highlighted every year since I've been here for five years, is our cardiac life saves. So this year, we had three, two in one day. And for you guys that were at our annual awards, you've seen that, that we had two on one day right before Christmas. So huge shout out to our guys on that. On the training side, over the past year, we completed over 12,000 hours total of training. Over that same period, we achieved sixty-six certifications, either through the state or national certifications. And then, one of the, and to include three individuals who achieved their paramedic, so, you know, that's a big thing for us here in this town. And we have one right now that's in paramedic school right now, so. And then lastly, for me personally, is we have another fire investigator that's certified now, so I don't have to do it anymore. On our community risks reduction, and I apologize for the slide in that red, it's got a big CCR in there. Thank you, Councilman Walton. It should be CRR efforts. So on the fire inspections and plan review side, we've nearly doubled the inspections and reviews and inspections since last year, and that has to do with the way we've just adjusted to how we do our business in accordance with NFPA standards. But however, his diligence and what he has done has a huge significant impact on our false alarms. So when he's out there doing fire inspections and we're removing alarms, twenty-plus-year-old fire alarm panels that don't even need to be there anymore, that's, you can see the numbers over the last couple of years that we've really almost cut in half of what we're doing. And this year, I mean, in the last two and a half months, we've had three. So it's just, it's getting better. On our public education, while continuing to offer our life safety classes and social media education programs, again, as I spoke, we revitalized our detector program, rebranded it to be aware program. And again, like I said, you know, we're 227 detectors that we've handed out since that program started in May. In addition, we recently kicked off our bike helmet program, our safety helmet campaign, which has meant to help reduce head injuries. We received a $2,000 donation from SDGNE and purchased 200 helmets. And to date, we've given out 22 of those, and we've held one bike rodeo. And we have another, I think, planned for national night out. And then, we have another plan for our open house in October, when we do our annual open On the emergency management side, over the past year, our emergency operations center was on standby six times. Five for our larger events, which are larger when the population kind of grows a little bit, such as our Fourth of July events, Art in the Park, Spring Jam, Wurstfest, and then the Shot Show. And then, we had one standby for a political type event in the park service, and they asked us to assist with that. And again, it was just a kind of a standby. We weren't actually physically in the room and sitting there for 12 hours or whatever. And then during this time, we also had two events to support Clark County and their MAC, one being the Fourth of July, or Fourth of July, Formula One, which we'll be doing again this year, as well as the, that fuel shortage that occurred in January. So we assisted in there. And then lastly, on this side of the House, we conducted a tabletop exercise where we did a simulated fire in the battery storage facility. We brought staff in and kind of sit down and kind of discusses how we're going to do business when we have to evacuate half of this town due to the smoke. It was an eye-opener. But again, it's a lesson learned, and that's what we, you know, that's what we want to In 2024, the construction of the two-story training building, which you guys have seen, and I brought to you last year, was completed. And over the last year, we continued with the improvements with the completion, as you see in the photo, of the road and the concrete pad around the building, the security fence around the entire area. And now, that photo on the left that shows the dirt around the concrete doesn't even exist anymore. Over the last three weeks since this has been published, that has now have hardened surface around that. And then again, you know, our intent is to continue to bring in props to help us train on the area, on the items that we need trained. As you see, that there's a car fire prop that runs off of natural gas, that's what that is. That's one of the props that we have on site now. And we're just continuously trying to improve that area, so more things to come there. On our accomplishments, I just wanted to highlight a few things, I don't want to go down this whole list, but one of the biggest things that we're required to do as an accredited agency is to complete an external and internal survey every three years. So, and that, part of that process is to also, when you're rewriting your strategic plan, so that's part of your goals and objectives in there. So this past year, we completed both the internal and external survey. You've probably seen the signs around the grocery store and stuff for people to click. We had over 250 respondents as far as the external. So it was really good, we had a lot of good feedback on, you know, how we, how they prioritize our services, what they want to see us improve and things like that. That allowed us to create our strategic plan. Originally, I wanted it to be the 25 to 2030 plan to coincide with the city's new 25 to 30. With bringing on Chief Morgan now, we're probably going to change that to a 26 to 2031, just once he gets kind of in the groove of things, then we can start working on this piece right here. But our intent is to have this probably done by January. The new LifePAC monitors, which you guys are aware, you approved that money, those have been working outstanding. We got them immediately and put them into service immediately, and the guys love that. And then another one that's highlighted, that's not highlighted, is another area that you guys provided money to as far as that G2 dispatch system. That was three years ago, I think. We finally got that installed this year, and that has significantly assisted us with improving our response times, primarily from the dispatch to the alerting the station, Nothing new here. So, you know, part of the accreditation process that we have to do is to identify our gaps in our response and report this annually to our leadership. So this is our gaps analysis, just like last year. The two gaps that we have primarily deal with not meeting response times and as well as the staffing. Again, you know, without the second fire station within the populated area of here, we will never meet those, the national standard of the response times. And obviously, a second station requires staffing, so that's what those two gaps are. Some of the issues, the, and I believe all of you guys have toured, we toured that last July of the fire station, the training area, and some of the last July, uh, of the fire station, the training area, and some of the needs that we were looking at. Um, the station lacks sufficient restroom and shower facilities for more than one female on duty. Uh, happy to report that Monday, they started the demo, and so within six to eight weeks, that project will be done. Um, another is the, uh, the station lacks sleeping quarters allowing for only minimum number of firefighters to be on duty, which right now it's eight. Uh, and then the, uh, the fire station administration lacks space for personnel currently fired and, currently the fire inspector works out of the city hall. Um, this is all part of that process with the training facility that is part of the track three fifty that we have the money for. So we're, we are still planning and, and working through that right now. Uh, so that will help a lot. And then our, um, lastly is our, just our VERF items, um, engine, our second engine, uh, which is, is really exceeded its fifteen-year use according to the standard. You use, it's about ten to fifteen years on an engine. Um, we're, that's a two thousand and seven. It's still a good truck, uh, but it's time to send it out to the, to the, to the pasture, so to speak. Uh, so we're working right now with finance to get that on the twenty-seven VERF. And then the last of our four rescues, uh, which, uh, that's a twenty-twelve model, um, those are ten to twelve years is what those last. Uh, so we're, again, we're working on, on getting that one replaced and the FY twenty-eight Right now, these are some of our, our goals, um, more to come, you know, now that we have Chief Morgan in the chair, um, a lot of these, uh, I would expect some of these goals to grow a little bit. Uh, we're gonna continue our training area upgrades, uh, we will continue our, improving our living area wherever we can and how we can do it. And then, um, the, uh, the biggest thing, right, another area is the capabilities of emergency management through the construction of the storage facility. Um, you know, that we, right now, we have anything that has to do with the pandemic spread all over the city. Anywhere there's a building that's the city, belongs to the city, I guarantee you, I have pandemic stuff in there. Uh, so this, this storage facility will allow us to consolidate, it's right by the fire station. If we have to go through something like that again, which I hope we don't, uh, we have it all in one area. Uh, happy to report that that construction started, uh, earlier this month. Um, I'm not sure what the timeframe is on that, but it shouldn't, it shouldn't be more than a month, two months. And then lastly, uh, as we've discussed last year, um, we're, we're gonna evaluate, take a hard look, uh, at the fire reserve program and just see, you know, what, what the benefits and, uh, of the effort that we put into this versus what we're getting on the other side of that and what, how that looks. So there are a lot of changes, uh, possibly on that one. Um, our skilled, our skilled team professionals provide twenty-four-hour emergency services in a multi-hazard role. We work diligently to serve the community, and I could not be prouder of their efforts. We're committed to our vision to meet the changing need of the community, our mission to provide the highest level of public safety services and our core values, and we will continue, uh, to work, to strive, and to be better every day. That's our goal. So with that, I'll turn it over to questions.
Thank you.
Actually, I'd like to defer to my fellow council members.
Okay, all right.
Is that because you're gonna be lengthy?
Maybe I will be.
So today I heard, I, I was trying to, uh, look it up, is there an app for emergency management that was put out?
So Code Red. So Code Red is a Southern Nevada, right? It's around the nation, but we have a Code Red, so since this is, September is, um, awareness for national preparedness, yes. So there is an app called Code Red. Uh, I did put it out on our social media and through the next, the Nextdoor social media.
I think that's where.
Yeah. Um, it is a good app to where you can get, uh, if there is something that affects our area or the, or Clark County, uh, it'll notify you.
Thank you. On the, uh, training facility, what benefits are you really seeing out of that as far as outsourcing, like where you would have to go somewhere else to train? Is it doing what it's supposed to do?
I have a hard time keeping them off of it. Um, they love it, yes. So when you're talking the live fire, the simulated live fire part of that, you know, and, and going back to when we were first, you know, looking at trying to get the training facility, um, at the time Henderson's was down, uh, so we were having, we, I say, that guy, uh, was having to take a team and take them up to North Las Vegas. So it's a long drive, um, you know, to do fire, and it took a lot of people just to do that fire, uh, including North Las Vegas. So it just, so now it's ours, it's right there in our backyard, uh, so it takes less effort to do it. Um, obviously, it's less effort overtime, uh, so it's, it's a huge thing. And that's just one little aspect of it, the confined space, the high-angle rescue, all those little pieces there.
And you'll continue to have more Dimpies or what you call, uh, props?
Oh, we just got one today. So we do, you know, since we do have a large thoroughfare through the highway system, uh, one of the companies in Las Vegas, we have, we now have a tanker in there to, you know, so it'll, it'll be a great training prop for, uh, any hazardous materials incidents that we have. So that just got delivered today.
Nice. Uh, last question I have is on the lift assist, is that because of baby boomers, more older people?
We're, we're getting old. That's, yes, it's, it's all, it's, it's notable. I mean, it is, but like I said, it's, it's not a, it's not to Boulder City, you know, with our higher population, it is not. Um, once I started seeing these numbers, especially this year, I started doing a little digging. It's, it's systemic, I mean, we, we, Chief Morgan and I have talked about it, he, he's seen the same thing on the, on the east coast. Uh, it's just, it's just the nature of it. It is what it is.
Actually, I do have one more. On the, uh, gap, um, not meeting the response, how, how can we fix that?
Um, as far as, it's, it's all because, you know, everything is, is, is within that six minutes and fifty seconds. Where the fire station is now and the area that it covers, and you're looking at a travel time of four minutes, all that area around here meets those times. Once you get out to the Del Prado, the San Felipe, over into Hemingway, Lake Mountain.
Totally outside.
It's gone.
Are there, uh, federal grants that could be looked at for a new fire station, that's something that's not gonna put a burden on the city, but, I mean, they have grants for everything else, safety seems first.
I have not seen any. Uh, maybe Chief Morgan may have a little more insight onto that, and that's something we can, we can look at. Um, you know, we, we do have opportunities for a lot of other things, uh, within the federal grants, uh, but I have not seen anything for facility or infrastructure-wise at all.
Thank you for all you do as well.
Thank you.
Well, I do live on the side where it takes a little longer to get there. Uh, I'm looking forward to working with Chief Morgan and seeing if you guys can come up with some ideas of how to solve that problem over there so that we might all be able to work on those for you, so. And I also wanted to say, the fire department, everybody loves them, they're a great bunch of people and always so pleasant to be around. So I just want to thank you guys for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I hesitate to take from your time, but.
I know it's coming, so.
Um, and probably on a softer note from me a little bit, I do live within the four minutes. Um, I live in the backyard, their backyard, pretty much, but, um, I, I appreciated what I heard tonight from the person who came, right? Um, the reality is, when you do get a, a phone call, it is someone who is, um, highly concerned, whether it be health reasons and/or, um, safety of their house. So when I had a chance to go to the awards night, um, it really touched my hearts. I sat with families, and so I, I recognize that the service that you guys do inside that building and in our community also, um, comes with families. And, um, I thank you very, very much. I, I wish we had a golden pot at the end of the rainbow, because I, I do think with that golden pot at the end of the rainbow, I would love to do a few pet projects, and, um, that extra station would be one. If we could find ways outside too to help finance some of that, I mean, that'd be a miracle, wouldn't it? And it'd be wonderful.
Absolutely.
Um, but definitely our eyes are, are on it and, and hopefully we'll be able to come up with ways to be able to do that. Um, thank you for your work serving as interim and all that you did for, um, the guys and girls there and all the projects that have been started, and I know that you, you helped spearhead a lot of the change that's going on in there and, and helped facilitate it. And welcome to the new fire chief, and I hope you're enjoying Boulder City as much as we do. Um, and, and just thank you to everyone and their families for the service that you provide.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Thanks for the thorough, uh, statistics and data, and, you know, that really drives decision-making as well. And, um, we appreciate, and I'll echo what has been said by, uh, my colleagues as well. Uh, you know, the, the diligent efforts, um, from our chief level and support staff through our operations folks has been fantastic, and we are grateful for, uh, all of our public safety. I always give a nod to the police when the time is appropriate, and right now, the time's appropriate to give a nod to our firefighters and, and all those who are involved in that. And in addition to our fire inspector, uh, Brad Stasic, and we're really lucky to have him on board, and a lot of the statistics show the effectiveness of the work that's being done on that side as well, and it's fantastic. Uh, three cardiac life saves, you know, the, the individuals, the, the spouses, if they're alive still, the, the children, the friends, all lives touched by the efforts of our firefighters and firefighter paramedics. Um, you know, you can't put any value on that whatsoever. Uh, I know we have concurrent calls, and we've received data on that over the years. And, um, you know, I've said this to our, our public works and our utilities folks, you know, there's a handful of things that a municipality needs to do that as an obligation to their citizens. You know, clean drinking water, treated and appropriately disposed of wastewater, streets, public safety, not a pet project. It's critical to the service that we're obligated to provide to our citizens. And so I look forward and welcome aboard Chief Morgan, by the way, uh, working with, um, you know, admin on, and our new city manager on what the data tells us and how we can figure out what we need to do to serve our citizens and make sure that, uh, everybody has the access to this public safety that we really are obligated to provide. Uh, and I appreciate the, um, the training center or the, the training props and the things that were done there. And let me, uh, give a nod to our past fire chief Gray, who really initiated the efforts to, to get the training center going and, um, to have that facility in place. And so, uh, we express appreciation to his efforts there for, for helping get that, that on the way. And as well as has been said, thank you for your time serving as interim fire chief. We appreciate all your efforts there and your continued support of Chief Morgan and, and all the efforts done by our firefighters and staffs.
I'm so happy to be back in my office.
I didn't catch the date for the fire department open house.
By looking at Chief.
It will be associated with pancake breakfast.
Yeah.
Somewhere October.
I know they just met.
Should I write that down? Somewhere October.
Well, I know they just, they just had a meeting on Monday.
Okay.
With their association, but they haven't come out with that.
Okay, yeah, and, and that's a good point. You know, it's, it's, it's in conjunction with the Firefighters Association, right? And all of the, the nonprofit work that they do from their side as members of our community as well.
Exactly.
And so it's a collaborative effort between, you know, fire staff and the Firefighters Association, and, you know, they really are out there slinging pancakes and sausage and orange juice and, um, it's great.
I just come to eat.
Yeah, it's a great opportunity for everybody to come to know our firefighters and to come ask questions and to, to understand what goes on and the, the, um, the realities of our response, um, abilities and capabilities, and like many in other departments, doing more with less. And really, uh, you know, providing the highest level of service, so thank you.
Thank you. There is, there has been a private ambulance offering. Do we have any connection with those, or do we share calls, or is there anything that?
No.
Okay.
No. They, their, their primary service is to Boulder City Hospital for non-emergent transports.
Okay. And, and they can be had through the hospital?
I will, Josh, do you want to come? Yeah, he's pointing, his finger is pointing up to the ceiling because he's had a lot of interaction with this. I'll turn it over to Chief Brown.
Thank you, council members, Mr. Mayor, for your questions. So in the Southern Nevada, to work as a private entity or just, or even a government entity to run an ALS ambulance, you have to be certified by the Southern Nevada Health District to operate a specific vehicle or ALS transport. And then in that certification, there are two types. You have an ALS transport vehicle where the, those are the ambulances or rescues that actually respond to nine-one-one calls. And then there's another certification called the interfacility transport or ALS transport, um, or ALS transport certification, where they are only licensed to actually respond and transport patients from facility to facility. So hospital, hospital, hospital doctor, that is their neck of the woods. That individual company that reached out is only actually certified at this time in inner facilities. They aren't certified to work in the nine-one-one realm, um, as of today.
Appreciate that. Thank you. So recently, I had the opportunity to witness, uh, the competency of the firefighters in that EMS situation, and I appreciate the training and what they're doing, and every time I get to see firefighters in action doing EMS, it makes me feel good, uh, and appreciate everything that they do and how they do it. So thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Um, one note, so tomorrow, we will publish the actual written annual report. Uh, obviously, this didn't have the data and all that stuff, so tomorrow is a little thicker report that'll get public, uh, put on our website, probably tomorrow, tomorrow afternoon, so.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Just a quick one, um, pancakes and bike rodeo?
Yes.
Okay, at the same location?
Yeah, now that we have the training area, and it's nice and hard, we're, we're looking at some things there, so.
Okay, and it's a good time since we have some new regulations in place for kids to come and, um, parents to watch and, and see what has.
And they're doing it on the, uh, National Night, PD already has it on their National Night Out as well.
Okay, great. Again, appreciation to Police Department and you for, um, picking up there and, and helping our kids and their safety, so thank you.
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am.
There's no other, thank you. Appreciate you coming. That brings us to item number eight. Uh, we need an introduction of Bill number two zero eight six and a motion to waive the reading except for title.
I'll introduce Bill two zero eight six and waive the reading except for title.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bill number two zero eight six, an ordinance of the city of Boulder City, Nevada, repealing and replacing Boulder City Municipal Code Title Four, Business Regulations, Chapter Eleven, Cable Communication Systems, and Chapter Twelve, Public Utility License, with the new Chapter Twelve titled Public Utility Regulations to provide more comprehensive regulations for right-of-way management for public utilities, including without limitation, requiring an agreement to place utility infrastructure in the public right-of-way, and establishing fees for use of city facilities. This matter will be considered for action at the September twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five city council meeting.
Thank you. That brings us to the number nine on regular business, the city council appointment to the Historic Preservation Commission. Madam City Clerk?
Thank you. We have one expired term occurring on Historic Preservation Commission. We're asking council to appoint one member. Uh, currently, um, the member whose appointment is expiring is Blair Davenport, and she is interested in reappointment. I will say there are, um, other volunteers who have applied for this particular position. However, Blair, at this time, is the only member who meets the Secretary of the Interior's professional qualification standards. That doesn't mean somebody can't meet this in a. That doesn't mean somebody can't meet this in the future, but at this time, out of all of the applicants, she's the only one that meets this requirement.
Thank you. I would accept a motion.
I'd like to nominate Blair Davenport.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Suppose it's been unanimous. Thank you. And that brings us to public comment.
Hello, I'm Aaron Meadow, Boulder City Electric, and also have a new initiative called Damn Wise that you may or may not have heard of. Before I start with a brief introduction of that, I just wanted to mention one thing about the emergency response. There's a lot of emergency response down to the lake. I frequent the lake very often, and I don't know if that was considered in that response time or if there's any shared money that, you know, the park could generate. I know nothing about the subject, so forgive me for my ignorance, but just food for thought. Secondly, I was taken back by the Fire Department when they said that the solar fields have batteries that are, I believe, lithium, and they would present toxic fumes, and that would require half the town to evacuate. Not sure if I totally heard that right, but if that's the case, that would be very alarming. And if that is the case, I would ask if there was a disclosure that was ever given or any warnings before we allowed the solar fields to put in those types of batteries. And last but not least, I wanted to, I wanted to speak on my opposition to Bill 2082. It's not because I oppose safety, but it's because I believe in the ordinance misses the mark and will create more problems than it solves. The problem, accidents involving e-bikes and scooters are a concern, but lowering the speed limit from 20 to 15 miles an hour will not prevent crashes. Accidents still happen at 15 miles an hour. The real issue isn't speed, it's education. Many of these devices don't even display the speed. It only shows through a phone or an app. This makes enforcement arbitrary and unfair. Worse, the kids will end up distracted, looking down at their phones for speed instead of keeping their eyes on the road. This ordinance also bans the responsible use in parks. Spaces are supposed to be for recreation and inclusion. It restricts scooters and e-bikes near businesses, forcing riders into traffic, into traffic, which may cause a far more dangerous situation. The fines of $150 to $600 are excessive and punishes families instead of promoting safety. The bigger picture, Nevada law already regulates these devices. Bill 2082 adds stricter local rules, which creates confusion and could even expose Boulder City to challenges under the Dillon's Rule. Most importantly, the process that brought us here is lack the true public input. Business owners, parents, and various kids and adults who actually ride were not meaningfully included in this decision. The solution, I brought forward a Damn Wise program, a complete proactive plan focused on training, education, inspections, compliance, and youth engagement. It includes a registration system, a certification database, and a safety curriculum and an indoor training course, outreach campaigns, dedicated staff. And this isn't a theory, it's a practical solution that can reduce accidents and serve as a model for other cities. But instead of being considered publicly, my proposal was set aside. This ordinance was pushed forward with fines and penalties instead of public outreach and engagement. My request tonight is I'm asking you for, to, I'm asking you to abandon safety. I'm, I'm sorry. Tonight, I am not asking you to abandon safety. I'm asking you to reconsider this bill, either repeal it or make it temporary until all stakeholders, residents, businesses, parents, kids, and city staff can come together and create a plan that works. Put my proposal on a future agenda in a special, special session, or it can be heard and debated and improved upon. I have more insight to share. Please follow me at Damn Wise, info@ridedammwise.com, Instagram, @ridewisecam, or on Facebook, Damn Wise, one word. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone here in chambers like to, we have somebody on the phone?
Good.
Public comment, go ahead.
Hi, this is Bryn DeLormier, and I'm just calling in to say I agree with the prior comment that I believe in education over mandates and fines. And additionally, I believe that education should include drivers as well. And I believe a lot of drivers don't, don't understand cyclist laws in the state of Nevada. And I also wanted to bring up one thing that I had noticed just recently driving myself, and I don't often drive, but I brought this up to Councilmember Denise Ashurst this morning. If you drive, if you leave the CVS parking lot, and I know that the city just condoned biking on sidewalks up to 15 miles an hour, which I don't agree with. If you leave the CVS parking lot, turning right onto Nevada Way, there's a cinder block wall there. It's a huge blind spot, and you'd naturally be looking less for traffic. I encourage all of you to give that a try and just imagine how easy it would be to hit somebody coming up the sidewalk at up to 15 miles an hour. And I'd encourage you, just as you ban people on sidewalks in the downtown, riding on sidewalks in the downtown, to ban it on that corridor as well, because that's an accident waiting to happen. So, thank you for hearing me out and have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you. Anyone else on the phone? If they aren't, 702-589-9629. Anyone here in chambers? No one on the phone? No one here in chambers? We will close public comment and go to city council's report. Start with you, Councilman Ashurst.
I don't have anything really to report from boards, but I would like for everyone to remember September 11th, never forget. I personally had friends and families involved in that, being from New York, and people are still hurting. So just, you know, just take today, maybe a few minutes, and pray for those that are still going through. And remember that it could happen again, so be vigilant in everything that we do. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
I happened to stop by the senior center this weekend. They asked that I ask people in our community, they need some gently used gifts for the gift shop. So anybody that has any glassware, purses, they can't take clothing, furniture, or shoes, but there are no books. They really need some gifts for their gift shop that are gently used, and they would greatly appreciate it. And so that's what I have to report for this week, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Sometimes when we say we don't have anything to report, I think that you might assume that means we did nothing. But that is, is not the case because there are emails and there are side meetings that are not, are larger meetings. I did, however, have an opportunity to do the debt commission and meet with Henderson on their summary of what they were bringing forward between, before the Clark County Debt Commission. So that's always very interesting. I think I told you that, that we are the only municipality that is not asking to incur debt. So they probably don't hear from me as much as they should or want to. And also had the chance to have a couple other meetings. But what I did want to say is with us having individuals from Clark County School District coming to talk to us, I just wanted to shout out again, because we thank volunteers from all over, all organizations that are in our community. But thank you to those who take time with our kids by going in and volunteering. And the numbers for that one school, it was, it was really refreshing to hear. And if you're looking for opportunities to volunteer, we are not short of opportunities here in Boulder City. Ask your neighbor, I'm sure they'll know where you can go volunteer and, and help. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for mentioning that, by the way. We did have the, the day of service on the 6th in commemoration of the service and sacrifice offered by so many across so many walks of life on 9/11. And we had a great turnout. And there were opportunities within our community and within Henderson, and we partner together as communities. But as you noted, you know, we really have people of service in our community that year long, you know, day after day, week after week, month after month. And we're really grateful for all that, everybody that volunteers in whatever capacity it is to better our community. Thank you. The Water Authority, the next meeting is September 18th, so nothing new to report there. The Colorado River Commission normally meets on the second Tuesday, and the meeting for this month was canceled for lack of new business. And then the Convention Authority also meets on the second Tuesday of the month. Just a few things. The entertainment and the resort partners are, continue to work to have events that are relevant and interesting and that drive tourism into Southern Nevada in spite of the, you know, variety of socio-political issues that have led to decrease. So this weekend, big super middleweight fight at Allegiant Stadium, Canelo versus Crawford. That's going to be livestreamed on Netflix, so a big event that will bring lots of people from out of town, out of state, maybe international visitors as well, since one of those fighters is from another country. Later in October, on the 25th, we have the Historic Black College and Universities Classic, HBCU Classic at Allegiant Stadium, Grambling State versus Jackson State University. And that's an annual event that's held per the NC2A, and that's held here in Southern Nevada this year, which is phenomenal. Later in December, at T-Mobile Arena, the NBA In-Season Tournament will be held. So they take more than just an All-Star break. There's actually an in tournament or an in-season tournament that's held various cities throughout the nation. But the semifinal and the final games will be held here in Southern Nevada at T-Mobile Stadium. So again, to reemphasize, all the visitation, the incremental room nights, the sales of additional things that end up going into the bigger pot that we get a piece of, we're grateful for that. And there's been a deal signed that the Las Vegas will be hosting the Kickoff Classic, the, the beginning of the NC2A college football season is, has special games at the beginning of the season. And we have been contracted with the NC2A to hold kickoff classic games for four years, beginning in 2027, '28, '29, '30. So big things coming down the pipe. And as our CEO at the Convention Authority says, in the next 16 months, Las Vegas will host more events, entertainment, and conventions with more visitors than at the same timeframe last year. So that's a good sign for visitation for Las Vegas. The event, event partners and resort partners are working diligently with the Convention Authority to drive visitation. And just my own prediction, hockey season's coming up, snow is going to start falling in Canada. I guess the Canadians are going to start coming back to Southern Nevada pretty soon because their favorite teams are going to be playing against the Golden Knights. Go VGK. So anyway, that's my report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. What, what you hear us talking about is how we relate with other cities and what we're doing with different boards in the greater Las Vegas, Henderson, Boulder City area. And it's, it's always fun to be in a group. I was, happened to be in a group of the four mayors and a group of people involved with construction. And one of the challenges they have is, you know, where does Boulder City fit in this thing? And I reassured them that not only do we fit in, but it's because of us that they're able to grow. So even though we're a slow-growth organization, we have a place for Tori, plural, that I made up for tortoises. And that's what allowed them to grow. And so, and we still allow it. So it's, it's interesting to have the mayors and groups understand that were it not for us, we wouldn't have some things such as I-11. We gave the land for I-11. And we have done many things, even though we're a slow growth, we have allowed growth. And so we do our part and continue doing our part and maintaining our uniqueness in that slow-growth ordinance that we have. And I really surprised them when I said, and we're actually considering building 120 homes. So that's, those are the kinds of things that may be under the radar in some people's view, but we are, in essence, growing slowly. And that is according to a plan, and we appreciate everybody doing their part. And obviously, in that growth, we need to make sure we have the protection that we heard about tonight. If there's nothing else, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.